Hi everybody, Adrian Fontes here. Did you know that the Democrats of Greater Tucson has a website? The DGT.org and if you subscribe, it's only 20 bucks. You can support this great weekly communication where folks get together. Sometimes there's candidates, sometimes folks like me pop on to help understand what's going on in the world. The Democrats of Greater Tucson, the DGT.org, join up today.
Layton Rockefeller Jr., welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Just a little background about myself. I am a native Tucsonan, born and raised here. I attended South Point Catholic High School, graduated there, left Tucson for, boy, about eight years, starting over at ASU for a marketing degree. Hold the booze, please. I did come back eventually, but ASU was a wonderful experience. It's where I met my wife. We, while I was at ASU in the business school, I was recruited by Ford Motor Company to join a new program they were developing jointly with the school to inject more college educated minority owners into their dealerships. I, my mother is Hispanic, so that makes me half as well as a second generation Tucsonan. So I, straight out of college, moved to Rochester, New York. I started working at a dealership there. Ford paid half my salary, the dealer paid the other half, and I just started learning the ins and outs of what it takes to own and operate a car dealership. Great experience, loved it. Had to get back to Arizona, though. I, I missed it specifically Tucson. I miss the weather, I miss the culture, I miss the food. I miss the community. Tucson has, Tucson is a special place. We, we have a sense of community here that I have not seen in other cities. This sense of pride, this sense of wanting to be better, wanting to improve our city, wanting our neighbors, our community to have all the opportunities we can have, and this genuine sense of caring for our city. Let's see, I, I, it was hard, though. It was hard because as we all know, there are not a huge number of employment opportunities in Tucson. And so what I ended up doing was taking the LSAT and enrolling and getting accepted into U of A Law School. So I came back here in 2008 for law school. My wife reluctantly agreed to completely shut down her booming photography business in Rochester and start from scratch again here in Tucson. And I will forever be grateful for her ability and willingness to do that. Although she did, she did tell me she's never doing it again, so we can't move anymore, which is totally fine with us. We, we love it here. I graduated law school in 2011 and I had a few other opportunities, but I just decided I really wanted to come work with my father. Now, some of you have perhaps heard of Rockefeller Law Firm. He's been here since the late seventies, been a small firm, usually between one and four lawyers. At the time when I was done with law school, it was just him, and so he welcomed me with open arms. And that was an incredible and has been an incredible experience for me. I, I am, when I talk about being a lawyer, I, one of my favorite quotes is from the comedian Stephen Wright, who said something along the lines of 99% of lawyers make the rest of them look bad. And I, I love that quote, but also I, I, I think it, it, it sort of has some truth to it, but also one of the things I love about this profession is that there are a lot of incredible caring people. And my father being one of them, you know, he taught me not only how to be a fierce advocate for each and every client, but also the importance of doing so with the highest level of care and compassion, with the desire to listen and with the true understanding that people come to us in, in this office, I'm talking to you from my law office, at a low point in their lives. They have been involved in some crash where they've been injured or their spouse has been injured or God forbid, killed or, and they are unable to work or they are unable to figure out how to pay for these massive medical bills. And so they're looking to us, their attorney, to not only get them some financial compensation, but also to guide them and to give them hope and to listen to all the ways that they are being, that their lives have turned upside down as a result of whatever injury they have incurred. And that is something that I had never considered before working with Layton Senior. That, that level of compassion that is so important and that, those are values that I intend to bring with me no matter where I end up, whether it be continuing as a personal injury lawyer, whether it be your next city council person, which is what I would love, love, love to apply these values to. I approach problems from a both sides perspective. The best way that I have learned to find a solution to a problem is to have as good an understanding as possible of not only my client and my perspective, but also the other side's perspective, the other side's arguments. Only when you understand both sides can you truly find a solution that is enduring and lasting. This career is not about saying, well, I want a million dollars and I'm not going to stop until I get it. That is a good way to bankrupt yourself. That is a good way to fail your clients and to leave them wishing they had chosen somebody else. You, I am, I am someone that researches. I am somebody that learns, I am somebody that asks questions with the hope of finding a solution. Some may call it pragmatism, I think that's a good word for it. And it's something that I truly believe can be put to very good use as a city council person. You know, I, I love this city, I, I love everything about it. I live over in the Catalina Vista neighborhood, which is on the southeast quadrant of Grant and Campbell. My kids are at the park all the time. We are, I am grateful to say that we are a community where on any given weekday, you, you can see kids in packs, riding their bikes around the neighborhood, knocking on doors, going to the trampoline at one kid's house, the pool in another kid's house, skateboarding in another kid's house. I am lucky to have found a community like that and I am hard pressed to ever leave it. My kids, my family, my wife, we intend to always stay in Tucson, probably always in that very house because of the neighborhood. So when I, when I started thinking about this run for office, obviously I started talking to friends and, and, and those I, those I trust with whose advice I trust. And the first question most of them asked me is, are you crazy? I don't know, I don't have a good answer for that. I, I do know that I have a calling right now to, to give back to Tucson. This city has given me so much. I am raising a beautiful family here, I have a great career. I am comfortable in saying that I have learned some skills, I have learned a lot about our city. I've met hundreds of, of residents through this job from all walks of life. And I, I'm ready to give back and this is the way I'm choosing to do it. And whether I win or lose, you know, this is a whole new, you know, I, I am not turning away from my city, I, I am ready to give back to it. This is the way that I've chosen, if for whatever reason it fails, you know, I'm not giving up on, on this new desire. Tucson is a wonderful place and I want to see it be even better because I think it can be, I truly do. The, the second question I get asked is, why are you doing this? And the answer that I give people, because it's the truth, is ultimately, I, I just want to make Tucson a better place with the perhaps selfish goal of giving my kids even more opportunities to choose to live here. By that I mean higher quality jobs, a stronger source of revenue, a holistic tax base that hasn't been increased so that we can fund the projects, build the infrastructure, provide the city that we all want to live in. I want my kids to have the choice to live in a Tucson that can be everything they need it to be in a city, where they have choices on what careers to, to work within, where they have freedom to let their kids ride their bikes around in the neighborhood, where they have a strong transportation infrastructure, where they can get around the city, perhaps even without a car and feel comfortable knowing that it's safe, at least safer than it is now. So those were my overriding reasons for wanting to get involved. Then, as is such a beautiful thing about this whole process, I started knocking on doors, I started talking to people and I started realizing that while my goals are good and pure and I think should be, you know, I hold on to them, there are more dire immediate needs and none of which are, are more dire than our homeless situation, which has become a top focus of this campaign. You're hard pressed to find anyone who doesn't think that Tucson needs to find better solutions to our homeless populations that have persistently either been rising or definitely not decreasing since 2019. I participated in the point in time count this year. It was an incredible experience, I met some really lovely people. I learned so much, I learned that most of these people were Tucson residents before they became homeless. And these are people with families in Tucson, these are people who are, are sons and daughters of, of, of our families. These are true Tucson residents and they are aching for help. They are begging to be paid attention to, but they are stuck. And the city has done a lot. The city, the federal government, the county, the state and dozens of nonprofits are all devoting loads of resources, loads of time to finding better solutions. And unfortunately, we just haven't seen a lot of improvement in the last four years, which you know, perhaps, perhaps all of that effort is in fact preventing even more people from becoming homeless. But what it doesn't appear to be doing is, is actually improving the situation. And, and so I have been meeting with people who study the problem. I've been meeting people who directly work with the homeless populations. And I've just been trying to get a better understanding of the problem. And one overwhelming pattern that I hear, that, that I hear from those people that I speak to is the need for a massive increase in the number of low barrier shelters available for our homeless population. I hear a lot of people telling me, well, you know, a lot of these people are just, you know, they'd rather live on the street anyways. And I think that's, I think that's a false premise. I think, yes, many of these people are choosing to, to sleep outside in the streets, but only because the alternatives that they are offered are, are not sufficient, are not adequate. And so given the choices that they have, yes, I, I think they are right, they are choosing the streets, but the solution isn't to just say, well, there's nothing you can do with those people. The solution is to give them better options. Not turn people away because they have a dog. You know, those of us who have dogs would be terrified at the prospect of abandoning our dogs, even if it meant having a roof over our heads. And not turning people away because they are not, because they are testing positive for some sort of drug. You know, people who are addicted, it's not exactly a choice for them to, to be clean just so they can get into shelter. And yet, without shelter, without the security, how can the city or the nonprofits or whatever entity is trying to help? How can mental health be offered? How can drug therapy be offered? How can methadone be offered? How can people be trained to be reintegrated into more stable housing and into a job, into our community, without starting with the very basic need of a safe and secure place to spend the night? And I know that this might sound very pie in the sky or, or maybe too simple and, and you know, maybe it'll turn out that I'm, I'm being too optimistic about all this, but nonetheless, I firmly believe that we can make changes to approaching this problem. And it has become a massive part of my campaign and something that I immediately wish to devote my time to, once I'm, once I'm on the council.
You ready to go?
Uh, let's see, I, I think I want to talk a little bit more about my, my, the economy. We, we are a city where, you know, I've met people from all over the world that have traveled to Tucson. We have a lot to offer. We all know that, we all live here. Tourism is an industry that continues to grow in this town. We get articles in newspapers and websites across the country telling people how wonderful our culture is, our food, our scenery, our environment. I want Tucson to be a place that is not only great to visit, but also to work and to live and to raise a family. And again, I know this is pie in the sky. I know this is something that Tucson residents have wanted for 50 years. But it is something that I will devote a lot of my time to if I'm, if I'm elected. Because I, I, I am tired of seeing us, for example, miss out on any major funding from the CHIPS Act. Phoenix got billions of dollars. We got very little. And I don't think we should settle for that. I, I think that we can, you know, we, we brought in a lot of economic development when Rio Nuevo was booming, when the streetcar came in. But ever since that Caterpillar building was finished, I think in 18 or 19, we've seen a, a, a big slowing of the number of new businesses coming in. And I'd like to get that economic engine fired up again. So again, these might be pie in the sky dreams, but I believe in Tucson and we have to start somewhere. I believe in our city, I believe we can be better. I will end by saying that my approach to problems in, in my career, in my approach to problems if I'm elected are to approach them with the pragmatism of an attorney and the compassion of a native Tucsonan. So yes, Joe, I think I'm done and I'm happy to talk about anything at all.
Great, great, and we're going to help you do that. So Lilian, thank you for being patient.
Okay, I, I like what you've had to say a lot. I think you're focused on things that are serious problems in Tucson. I'll give you one piece of advice, then I have a question. I'm going to send you an article for the New York Times and it's an interactive thing where people talk. And what they did is they interviewed people who are homeless and they, a big point is that people who live in motels and are couch surfers do not count as homeless and they don't qualify for benefits, but they're a big part of the homeless problem. Now, my question is, a crisis Tucson has is water. What are your opinions on our water situation?
My opinion is based on living here for, you know, 34 of my 43 years. And that is that Tucson has done an incredible job of making do with what we have. We've been very good at conserving the water that we have. We've been very good at reducing the amount of water we use, even as our population slowly increases. And you know, I love this new project that was signed that I know has been sidelined since the intentional turmoil that is wreaking havoc on our country, brought to you by Washington, the toilet to tap infrastructure. But I'm going to be optimistic and say that these, these projects will get built at some point. It might be a few years later than we at first wanted. I think my biggest concern is the fact that we are basically last in line when it comes to the Colorado River. And I often worry that just as we've been good at conserving, I fear that that can hurt us in the future where people say, well, they're so good at conserving it, we don't even need to give them all that water anymore and now we're permanently stuck with a smaller amount of water. So I think it's an issue that can never be, can never be forgotten, can never be ignored. However, I think that Tucson has done a really good job of, of reducing our water usage and you know, compared to other desert cities, we have a great track record on that front. Is there something specific, more specific than that you would like me to address?
Yeah, I'm very concerned about water. TUSD spends 1.4 million dollars a year on reclaimed water. So they're watering grass all over the damn place. And apartment complexes and other facilities in Tucson typically water grass three times a day, every day. We don't have even the kind of public information available that Denver uses. And so I think we, we waste a lot more water than we realize.
I agree, and, and what that tells me is there's even more room for improvement, which I think is a is a good thing, to be quite honest. It's when we get to a point where we can't improve any longer, where it, it starts to be a question of if, if living in the Tucson desert is even a possibility any further. But, you know, I don't want to get into dire end times thoughts like that. And so, yeah, I mean, you've pointed out, there's, I mean, my neighbor across the street is one of the only houses in our entire neighborhood that has a lawn still. I, I think that speaks highly to all the other residents who have taken the commitment, because when that neighborhood was first built, I bet you 90% of the houses had lawns.
Yep, but that's small.
I think we've made a lot of improvements and yes, there's more room to improve, I agree with that.
Yep, that's small and compared to the water that TUSD wastes. And the 1.4 million dollars they spend, that doesn't include the 18 schools that don't use reclaimed water because it's not available. So they, they're spending a fortune watering the grass. And the apartment complexes are terrible. Every one, I guarantee you, they're watering the grass three times a day, every day. And that's not necessary, even if you want grass.
And they often don't use reclaimed water for that.
Oh, because they don't have it available.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a follow up in the chat from Jenna Sagal, who, Sagal, who wants to know whether you support the efforts on climate change and water conservation the city's currently undertaking, particularly planting trees, water with green, stormwater infrastructure? And what are you planning to do about rising heat levels as global warming progresses?
I absolutely support it. I'm on the Neighborhood Association Board in my Catalina Vista neighborhood, I'm, I'm the secretary. On and off, I've been on that board for a few years. I took a hiatus when my second child was born. But we, we talk about it often, planting trees, water mitigation, I'm sorry, cutting curbs, adding infrastructure to our neighborhood streets that collect more of the stormwater for use in, in landscaping. What am I going to do to address the rising heat? That is a question that is so important and I, I want to say I think the city is doing a lot. I love that they're starting cool, they have these cooling centers for the homeless. I want to say it's a question that my family and I talk about all the time. My 10-year-old especially is very concerned about our climate and worries that he's going to have to move to Michigan at some point. And all I can say is, we just have to try. The, the problem is that no matter what we do in the city, we are just one tiny speck in the, in the world. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't try. You know, I'm, I, I am grateful that the city has put into service an electric garbage truck. I know it's one out of dozens, I know that. I know it costs, you know, 50% more than, than another garbage truck would cost. But I think it's an important step and I think it's steps like these that we just have to keep taking. We have to keep looking forward. A lot of the politics that are coming out of Washington and even Phoenix want to take us backwards and it's driving me insane. Tucson needs to keep looking forward. Tucson needs to keep making decisions that look forward. And so when it comes to rising heat, you know, I, I wish that there was, I wish that things we did here in Tucson more directly affected Tucson, but that's just not how it works. So all we can do is keep looking forward and, and, and be optimistic that the world will figure this problem out because it does look dire sometimes, I'm sorry to say. It, it truly does. And, and it's a, it's a, a question that makes me it, it makes me sad for my, for my kids, to be quite honest.
Sure, but you know, you gotta keep in mind that most of humanity lives in cities. Most of the economic activity of the human species occurs in cities and so cities Most of the economic activity uh, of the human species occurs in cities. And so cities can be a a huge part of the solution to our climate crisis uh, if cities act. And so, you know, we may be a small part, but together with other cities, we're we're a big part.
That's exactly right. And so I think making small steps like uh, our electric buses, our electric garbage truck. It doesn't, it might not affect at the the overall impact dramatically immediately. But it's all part of that moving in the right direction and and showing our people, our citizens, that we do care as a city. And that we are taking steps and showing other cities that we are taking steps. So yes, I I agree with you.
Okay, uh, Pat Weedoff has her hand up.
Hi, Leighton.
Hi.
What do you consider your most significant accomplishment?
Well, I think my most significant accomplishment as an attorney, and thank you for the question, is a case that I uh, had against, well, against T U S D. Um, I can't get into too many of the details, but it was a young girl. Um, there was sexual harassment or there was touching involved. And it was a huge fight. It was a huge, huge fight and we ended up with a very positive outcome for my client and her family. And this was in twenty twenty. I I was a changed person since that outcome. I had a whole new understanding of my career. Um, I don't know, I couldn't tell you if it was better for better or for worse, to be quite honest. I it was eye opening. Nonetheless, um, I I I was able to get my client um, a good outcome and I learned a lot. And so in that respect, um, that is a major accomplishment of mine. Um, on a more personal level, it is this might sound very generic, but you know, having two loving boys, a loving wife, having a family that I I can come home to every day and a network of friends that um, support me in this endeavor and support me in life. So I'm sorry if that's a bit generic, but but I I am very proud of of my family and my network of friends and family.
You call it generic, I'd call it universal.
Yeah, universal. That's a more positive spin on it. Thank you. Um, any other questions, Patricia?
No, that'll do it. Thank you very much.
I see a question about website and signatures and donations, and thank you for putting my website in there.
Sure.
Signatures I would like to talk about. Uh, I was one of the first, well, I was the first in Ward Six to submit my paperwork to the clerk's office and I got started right away collecting signatures. Uh, I I made a huge dent even before uh, the end of twenty twenty-four. And I'm I'm really happy to say I am about a hundred and fifty signatures above the minimum. And I continue to collect them almost every single day. I have not hired anybody to do it. It's been just me and um, family and friends that have been walking the streets. And uh, so yes, I I will continue to collect signatures. Uh, I I I will, even if I turn him in now, I I am I am confident that we would survive any sort of challenge based on the numbers. So we are
Got a couple of questions in the chat for you, Leighton. Uh, Ron wants to know, uh, do you support further city annexations uh, when the city police are not adequately servicing its current residents already?
Well, it's an interesting way to ask the question.
I think it's a bit leading, yeah.
So I I support annexations because I think annexations are a good way to get land into the city that we can then use for development specifically of industry and businesses. And I think it solves, it it answers the question of, okay, we want to attract new employers, but where are we gonna put them? So in that regard, I absolutely uh, do support adding um, land to our city. Now, if we're adding land that is already uh, occupied, because that, of course, would would entail adding mostly vacant land. If we're adding land that is already lived in, I mean, in theory, that would give us a new tax base, but I you know, that that
It also brings
I'm not sure I like the way the 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 way that question is worded. I it 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 in in a deposition, that question would definitely get um, and I don't mean to offend, I'm sorry. It would it would it would get objected to because um, be first of all, I don't disagree with you that the police are underfunded. Um, I'm just not sure if annexation would necessarily add to that problem.
Hmm, so. Yeah, nonetheless, even though you might object to the question in a deposition, you still have to answer it, as you know.
I still have to answer it. I still have to answer it. You're right.
Uh, Jenna uh, has another question, a follow up uh, to her previous question about climate change. And she asks, what if the power goes out? Currently, most of the solar uh, that people have on their houses are is connected to T E P. So if the grid goes down, uh, they can't use their solar to cool their houses, which is true unless they have battery backup, as I myself do. And most of our cooling centers don't have solar with battery storage, so they won't be able to cool if the grid goes down. Uh, does that can, does that concern you? What kind of solutions can you offer?
Yeah, it absolutely concerns me. I, you know, and and power is a is a issue that has been brought up at many of the city council hearings in the last year. There is a growing movement to privatize power.
Hmm.
Um, I think that has been met with some success in some cities and not so much success in other cities. So
Oh, let let me stop you there. In in this context, what do you mean by privatized power?
I I mean, I I'm sorry, public public power. I misspoke. Thank you, Michael, for correcting me. Um, deprivatizing our power. Um, and you know, I I'm not, I, as I sit here, I don't know if that is a is going to help or hurt uh, brownouts or blackouts. Um, but i- it's all part of the climate crisis. So finding ways to become more resilient, Michael, you've got battery backup solar. That is a huge expense. I I know it is. Um, but also it it begs the question, can we can we have a better solutions at a network level to backing up power outages? Can we have battery backup? Maybe it would only last for an hour, but can we have something like that uh, in our power system, in our power grid, whether private or public, that can alleviate some of those uh, power outages? Because as we all know, they are deadly in the desert when they happen in the summer.
Sure.
Um, so yes, it's a it's an issue that I would love to explore and and find better solutions to. As I sit here right now, I'm sorry to say I'm not extremely informed on the issue, so I I can't really answer in more detail than that.
Hmm, do you have a, well, since we've talked to talk uh, touched on the point of uh, deprivatizing our uh, electrical system, i.e. turning over the the contract to a to a public agency, as it were, or buying out T E P, basically. Uh, there have been proposals of that nature here in Tucson. Uh, where do you stand on those? What are your thoughts?
I I think it's a very fine line. I think there are there are pitfalls to it, and I think there are potential benefits to it. I think that we need to be sure if we're gonna go into that, it is important that we spend all the money needed to research it properly and to do it right the very first time. And I know the city has made uh, uh, ha- has made some inquiries into it and has some people investigating it. But that is a that is a problem where I believe it we need to make absolutely certain of it. And my fear is that we've got this contract coming up. Does anyone know the date? Is it twenty-six or twenty-seven when T E P is due for renewal?
I think it's twenty-six.
So that's in my mind, very soon. And the thought that we can make this decision and make the correct decision with the properly researched information before twenty twenty-six is I don't know. I I don't know. The realist in me doesn't see that happening. Um, and so I'm not against the idea, but only if we do so having fully researched it. And that and that involves spending, I think, a significant amount of money in um, in in having people come in and and properly evaluate the problem and and seeing if the numbers work. Because I mean, this is such a massive change to the current system. I we can't just go in there saying, well, it's public now. We're gonna, we're gonna do a better job.
It is a big change, but it's not historically a change. Historically, private ownership of public utilities is is kind of the unusual uh, way forward. America, you know, has long had public utilities.
They absolutely have, and we have a public utility here, water. However, it's a big change for Tucson if we are to make it. And like I said, it just has to be properly researched. And from what I've read about the current um, uh, position of the city, I don't think that research has has been fully, fully completed yet or even really started, to be quite honest. So.
Well, I think Joe's gonna take off. He uh, dropped a note saying goodbye to you in the uh, in the chat. So he's got an appointment he has to take off for. So I'm gonna take over moderation.
Happy hour, Joe. Thanks.
Thank you.
See you, Joe. And uh, Lillian Fox has her hand up. She wants to ask another question. Go ahead, Lillian.
One, my question is gonna sound weird. I want to know what experience you have with math. In other words, how good are you with math? And what experience do you have with analysis? And I'd like examples of where you've done that or know how to do that.
Lily wants you to do a job interview. Shall we give you some ju- some Google Genius questions for you to answer?
No, the problem is, the reason T U S D is such a a mess is for years and years, the we've had very few people on the the board who can actually, who actually will look at the budget and figure out if it makes sense. They can't even answer basic questions. And we just have to have, not everybody has to be good at analysis, but we need people on the various governing boards who know how to do that and who will do it.
Yeah, well, I make fun, Lillian, but it is it is a serious issue as to whether or not, you know, candidates for city city government uh, have the expertise to be able to actually, you know, understand what the what the budget is and where it goes.
Yeah, and not everybody has to be that way, but we gotta have a few people who do or who are.
Okay. My math. I was a marketing major, but before that I was in engineering.
Oh, good.
That I was taking Calc One, Calc Two, um, uh, oh my God, differential equations. It's it's a long time ago. I'm sorry, Lillian. I A's and B's in in those classes. So that is a knowledge that I I I haven't thought about in a long time. I I will tell you that. Because my career took a different um, route. At in a more practical sense, um, I was working at a car dealership. I was, you know, car dealerships notoriously, I don't know if anyone knows this here. But when you sell a new car, your margins are usually on average one to two percent.
Yeah, razor thin.
That is, that means that every every single dollar matters in a dealership. So a lot of that training was analyzing books. Um, I was a finance manager for two, two of those three years. So I was actually writing uh, deals and negotiating with banks to get interest rates. Um, I deal with math on a daily basis here in this career. Um, you know, whether it's calculating lost wages, whether it's reading the um, the uh, uh, taxes of my clients and also evaluating the books of the companies that we are um, while suing. Uh, so math, it it, I mean, I this play, if math plays a role in in my career, albeit not as um, not as much of a role as if I was, let's say, a math professor like
Yeah, well, more importantly, you have functional uh, knowledge of of finance.
But evaluating numbers is 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 all part of this job. And it takes me back to what I was saying earlier. You gotta understand it, the the problem from both sides. If you just take it as I know better, if you unless you stay new, and by staying new, I mean, you have to, that was one of the best pieces of advice I got as a uh, in the dealership. Stay new. The minute you start to think you know more than the other side, the minute you start to think you know what they're gonna say because it's what happened in the past, you lose. You gotta stay new. You gotta keep approaching every problem as though you've never seen it before and you've got to research it. And that's one of the things I've found very rewarding about doing this for the first time, this being running for a for public office. It's all new to me. I am remembering how much that drives me, how much that desire to learn is pushing me to do as 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 much and as as well as I can. So no, it is not something where I am, you know, solving um, complex equations on a daily basis. But math plays a role in my everyday career, absolutely.
Good. That's great because accounting and finance at the government level is not advanced math. It's arithmetic.
That's right.
And an arithmetic and a desire to analyze what the heck is going on. So thank you very much. It sounds good.
Thanks for the question, Lillian. Uh, Andrea Kennedy has her hand up. Why don't you go ahead and ask your question on mute there, Andrea?
I was wondering, uh, one of the things I was wondering is um, how you're studying up and learning about how the city works and the different organizations. It occurred to me, maybe you should try reading the minutes of the previous meetings and now and then as I thought about it, that no, he he became a lawyer and he ran a car dealership. I guess he's used to finding out stuff, but I'd be interested in how you are sort of educating yourself for this. And also your comment on um, stay new reminded me of the Art of War, which you are supposed to read if you run for office. Uh, know your enemy and know yourself and you will be the victor in a thousand battles. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Um, well, I I, the Art of War was required reading in in business school as well, which is kind of funny, but um, yeah, I am due for a reread of that. So thank you for bringing it up. I I really enjoyed it. It's a short read. It's a great read. Um, let's see, what what was your other question? I started thinking about the Art of War when you mentioned it.
How are you educating yourself?
How am I, thank you. How am I educating myself? Um, yes, uh, reading minutes, attending meetings, meeting with people, um, meeting with council people, meeting with um, Tucson employees, meeting with nonprofit employees, meeting with uh, profit employees, meeting with um, you know, a lot of my focus has been around the um, the homeless issues. However, I have met with um, well, a a few developers, for example. I want to understand their take on the uh, upcoming um, community corridors tool. Um, I have met with a few lawyers that are involved with the city. I have met with um, I met with a gentleman that um, is employed by the city and he is um, working directly with the Bi-Fusion people to to get this new facility up and rolling um, so that we can become a leader in in plastics recycling in Tucson, which is a really cool thing that I'm very proud of. And so the short answer, you meet with people, you get new names, you call them, you meet with them. It's been it's been me learning in in that way, meeting, meeting over coffee and lunch and learning. Also attending meetings, also reading as much as I can. There's so much on the internet about our city, city plans, um, all the different um, areas of the city. We all, there's so many published reports and they are a wealth of knowledge. So that's how I've been learning.
Cool. Thanks for the question, Andrea. Um, we got a couple of questions in the chat. Uh, first of all, Susie would like to know where you stand on Prop four one four. We're all gonna be voting on that soon.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Um, I actually had an op ed published a few weeks ago coming out against it. Um, I think it's an over extension of of of, I think it's too much money too quickly. I don't like regressive taxes, but that wasn't necessarily why I'm against it. My fear is we are going to build all these new buildings and have no way to pay for them after the tax expires. I am not saying I am against anything that the proposition is trying to advance. I think that our police and fire do need help. I don't like the way that this proposition approaches it. I think it's too much money. I think it's going to, I think it's going to give us ten years of, of, of infrastructure improvement, and then we're gonna be left trying to figure out how to pay for it all. And that worries me a lot. I worry that we are gonna have thousands or hundreds at least of new police and fire staff, and our general budget is simply not gonna be able to support them. So we're gonna be stuck in this cycle of having to just keep, in effect, a permanent tax increase. And so for those reasons, I did come out against it.
Um, Jenna Segal wants, uh, to know, read the homeless, uh, what do you think about, uh, having urban camping, which is a big controversy?
Um, I think it's harming our tourism. I think it's harming our businesses, and I think it's a problem. And at the same time, I am a compassionate liberal. I, I, I know these people are, you know, just trying to survive. And so, you know, I, I ultimately think that, um, the solution is not to just come in with police force and boot them out. I don't think that solves anything. I think that causes a lot of stress for those living out there. I think it sets everyone back, you know? They, they lose their stuff. They could be gone. They come back, their entire camp is gone. They don't have any more. Change of clothes, their ID was in there, their phone.
I think Jenna wants to clarify her question, if you don't mind. I think she's, she's, she indicated that that's not what she was really asking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jenna, you want to clarify?
Yeah, um, I'm talking about like Pamela, um, let's see, I shouldn't know her name. Pamela, uh, oh, well, whatever. Anyway, somebody, several people, including Steve Kay, had suggested having organized, um, urban camping.
Oh.
Where, um, they've had it in some places like Seattle, um, and they govern theirselves, but there's things like community gardens, there's showers, there's.
Like setting up an official campground that would be, have some oversight.
Trash containers, so they clean up after themselves. Yeah.
You know, I think that is part of the solution, but I, I would, my fear is, is something like that becoming too permanent, and, and it would have to obviously be uh, regulated as far as how many people can live there, because, you know, you also see cities like Phoenix that became, downtown Phoenix became just too large for, for the businesses to survive even. And so I, I can't say I necessarily support it unless it's sort of a stepping stone to getting
Yeah, services and, you know.
The streets permanently.
Yeah, that make, that makes sense. But I mean, if we can control it, it, it's certainly better than, you know, Wildcat cabs popping up and then having to disrupt people's lives by clearing those and, you know, disrupting nearby businesses. So certainly seems like a good idea. Jenna also mentioned, uh, uh, in the chat that, would you be willing to look into potential bonds and funding to make it feasible? I, I think you actually indicated that that is something that you'd be interested in.
Absolutely.
Spending the resources to, to study. Uh, my follow-up, uh, to the four-one-four question is, uh, where do you stand on R T A Next? That's also a big tranche of money that we're, that we're looking at, uh, spending and how to spend it, how to allocate it. What are your thoughts?
Well, I'll start by saying that I believe that the city of Tucson and our surrounding communities do need some sort of regional transportation plan.
Sure.
Now, whether or not R T A Next is the right one is a much harder question for me to answer. On a personal note, I've been, and my neighborhood has been very, very frustrated and disappointed by the first R T A. We live, you know, our neighborhood abuts a part of Grant Road that seems to have been forgotten forever. Phase one, two, and three, phase one was finished, phase two and three are, and I'm sorry if I'm getting the phases wrong. I believe they're currently working on phases two or three. It could be three and four. Are currently under construction, which leaves our phase out of time, out of money, and absolutely no mention of it in R T A Next. And when our neighborhood writes letters and makes phone calls, the answers we get are basically, we have nothing to tell you about, about those phases of Grant Road. There's no money. There's no plan to complete it. And so what we're left with, with is a new Grant Road for, you know, three miles, followed by an old Grant Road with no sidewalks and rotting infrastructure. And then another new section of, a few miles down the road. And it's just, it's a disgrace. It's a disgrace. And so from a personal level, it's very hard for me to say that we should trust R T A Next with so many millions of dollars when they've failed in their first attempt so miserably. And, and, and this Grant Road is only one of the many projects that have been sort of just left behind. And nobody at R T A seems to have an answer or seems to even care to answer those questions. So I don't know. I, I, I think ideally Tucson comes up with a better transportation, uh, plan, and it has to be regional. I mean, that, that's, that's my lot, that's, those are my opinions about R T A Next.
Um, if you have some time, we're coming up on the one o'clock hour. If you want to extend a little bit, I'd be, uh, interested in asking you some more questions. Can you, can you hang out for a little bit?
I can go a few more minutes. Yep, I have to be somewhere at one-thirty. I have to drive there, so I got about five or 10 more minutes.
Excellent. Um, my big question is, uh, I suppose, uh, free transportation. Uh, you indicated the public transportation may be not safe enough, uh, right now. Uh, do you want to keep free transportation? How do you, uh, expect, uh, and hope to, to make it, uh, safer for people? And, uh, what do you think about, uh, passenger rail between Tucson and Phoenix and possibly extending our, uh, our light rail system?
I mean, okay, yes, I love free transportation. I think that our free fare, our, our no fare buses and streetcar are a tremendous asset to Tucson's community. I think that it is a way that we set ourselves apart from most cities. And I think the gift of, of being able to get around the city at no cost is, is, it boosts, it, it's, it's helpful for everybody. Um, my understanding is, even if we, even when we were charging, uh, rates for the buses, it, it was only paying for a very small percentage of the actual, uh, running costs.
Less than 10%, if I'm recalling correctly.
What was it?
Less than 10% if I recall correctly.
Right. And so in order to truly pay, I think the fare would have to be sixteen or eighteen dollars a ride, which we would have no one riding the bus, obviously. That's more expensive than an Uber. So you know, that I, I've heard the argument that, well, we're, we're just giving money away, and, and I, I think that it's a, we, we weren't really paying for the program already, so I think that extra 10% is well worth the, the effort. Safety, I've heard this argument that free fares make riding the bus less safe, especially for uh, the drivers. I have not seen um, any research or evidence to support that. Maybe I just haven't seen it. I don't know if it's been done or not. Um, the one individual that I spoke to about that issue told me that really the, their, their information tells them that while, while there may be, um, a few more, uh, dangerous individuals riding the bus, it also eliminates the arguments and, uh, incidents that used to occur over fares. So that individual seemed to think it was basically a wash when it comes to safety on the buses. As far as making it safer for our drivers, you know, uh, we've all been to cities where they're, they're basically enclosed in a, in a.
Bulletproof booth, yeah.
Panel. You know, I, unfortunately, maybe that is something we need to explore. Um, light rail, yeah, let's extend it. I, it saddens me that, that, you know, while I'm, I'm, I'm grateful that we're getting a, um, high, uh, eight, I'm sorry, I can't remember the term they use, the, the bus line that's gonna run down first, um, to downtown. A, uh, express bus route with its own dedicated lane.
Hmm.
That's great. That's wonderful. And I think that goes a long ways to accomplishing what a streetcar accomplishes. What I am not so optimistic about it accomplishing is the economic development factor that we saw with our streetcar.
Yeah, huge.
And that is huge. You know, even if the streetcar is a money-losing proposition, it's hard to argue with the number of businesses that popped up along that line and continue to pop up along that line, including the Caterpillar. Um, relocate.
Not to mention denser housing.
Quarters, so.
Not to mention denser housing. I mean, the, the housing.
Denser housing as well.
Quarter has been fantastic. Um, so, uh, inter, inner-city rail, you didn't mention that.
The, the lifelong dream of every Tucsonan, right? I mean, how scary and terrifying does I tend have to get? I think it would be a wonderful thing, and, you know, I know, I feel like every 10 years, some new group comes and promises it and studies it. And I, I, um, I would love to see that happen, and if I am elected, I, I will do what I can to, you know, to, to, uh, aid in that process, because I think it would help both cities.
Okay, so you have one minute left. Um, one last question. Uh, how do you feel about, uh, Tucson being a uh, uh, so-called sanctuary city and cooperation with, uh, with the federal immigration authorities, uh, by Tucson personnel?
How do I feel about cooperation, current cooperation with federal authorities?
Current or future, because there's certainly going to be demands and threats to our, to our money as a result of those coercive demands.
You know, that, I mean, this is the question, and the way I hear it is, you know, should Tucson give in to the federal government's bullying, or should we continue to stand firm? And, and I, you know.
That's the question.
No, I, I don't think we should give in. I think we should fight. I, we can't, we can't be bullied, and it makes me sad of all the companies and, and the U of A, and it makes me sad that we're getting pressure from the state, uh, governments as well. But we need to stand firm. I, you know, I, yeah, I guess they could wreak economic damage on us, but, um, it feels like they've already done that regardless. Um, so you know, again, a- and I'll, I'll just say it one more time. It's, it's a problem that has to be researched. There's pros and cons to both sides. But as I sit here now, my, my instinct is to say, no, we can't be bullied by, by these ridiculous, ridiculous laws that are being pushed and passed in, in Washington.
All right. Well, thank you so much for joining us, Leighton. I appreciate you and, uh, appreciate you coming and answering all our questions, and thank you for your time, and thank you for your, uh, your willingness to engage in public service.
It was great. I thank you all for coming.